... meeting of the Board of Education for Tuesday, April 22nd. This meeting is now called to order. Dr. Turner, may we have a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Blau.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hall. President. Heinrich.
Ms. Heinrich? I'm still Mrs.
Yes.
Present.
I myself present, Ms. Weems.
I am here.
Ms. Walker, absent, we have a court.
Thank you. We will now stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
All right, now, we will move right into recognitions.
All right, thank you, President Weems. I would like now to call Ms. Diane Bowman, our Director of School Community Relations, to the podium as she shares information on our recipients of the Judy White-aura Teaching with Heart Award recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Evening.
So, the Teaching with Heart and Soul Award was created in honor of former Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction Judy White-aura, who unfortunately passed away in 2006. Judy believed in investing other people in relationships. During her years in education, she developed a pledge for teachers. The pledge is called the Teaching with Heart and Soul Award Pledge, and what it says, it reads as follows for teachers: Today, I will respect the uniqueness of each child. Today, I will ignite the joy of learning. Today, I will listen to their voices. I will put human connections first. I will encourage the spirit and let their light shine, and I will create a caring learning community. So this year, we had the most incredible nominations. It was truly a difficult task, so we had to choose two. So we have one of our award winners that could be with us tonight, so I will welcome Wendy Marsick to come to the podium. So Wendy does not like to take credit and be the star, but she certainly deserves to be the star. So Wendy is a teacher at North Farmington High School. She currently works at North Farmington Teaching Special Education. Her nomination states that she is an inspiration to all who work with her. She is dedicated to her students and to making North a place accepting to all. Her bond with her students is so strong that they continue to reach out to her even years that they have left the school, and I've heard stories about that. Wendy spends hours working with her kids to make sure that they are not only achieving at their highest potential, but that they feel safe and comfortable in school. She understands that students without connection will struggle with learning, so connections to students is her priority. We noticed that in her classroom when we surprised her, too. Wendy is a go-to person for so many students at North. She is there for all students, not just the ones in her classroom, but all students. Her room is a safe place for help, for comfort, and for a place to belong. She goes out of her way to make sure that students are seen and respected for who they are. She recognizes that teaching is more than math problems. It's making sure that everyone is welcome, safe, and loved when they step into school. So we couldn't be more happy to give you your award tonight.
Thank you so much.
And then this will hang at the new administration building, and I'll have your name right here.
So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone, to Farmington Public Schools. I'm lucky to be with some of the best colleagues, the best students, you know, the 27 years I've worked here, and tonight, I'm blessed to have my mom here, my husband, my three-year-old granddaughter, who I chase around, and two of my sons are here, and a lot of my coworkers and former coworkers, so I appreciate this. It's an honor, and I was lucky to have Judy as a guest professor at Eastern, and I still have her pledge in my classroom with my name before I got married, so I live by that, I believe in it, and I hope someone does that for my students and my kids and my grandkids someday. So, thank you very much.
And while Kate cannot be here tonight, our second winner was Kate Donnelly Harris from Gill Elementary School, so maybe we can find another time to honor her with this award. So, thank you very much.
Congratulations to all the winners, and we'd love to take just a quick break.
We got one more.
We got one more? Oh, oh, yeah, that's right, Deb, right?
Yeah, okay. Okay, I'd like to now welcome up Mr. John Barth, our Director of Facilities, to introduce our Support Person of the Year. And Luke.
Good evening, Board members. Dr. Coffin? So as Director of Facilities Management and representing the entire school district, it's my honor and privilege to introduce Deb King.
Yeah!
Who has been chosen by a district committee as Farmington Public Schools Support Person of the Year 2025. So now, I'm going to embarrass Deb. So Deb has been a district employee since 2003, so 22 years. She excelled in many roles here in Farmington, including as a noon aide, a parking attendant, a hall monitor, and as a custodian. She has been the head custodian here at Maxfield Education Center since 2022. Colleagues of Deb shared that she has made outstanding contributions to the custodian team and has a tremendous positive impact on staff, students, and families. She is known for her dedication, strong work ethic, and ability to exceed expectations. A colleague in her building shared, beyond her outstanding work ethic, Deb is known for her friendly and approachful attitude. She is always courteous and helpful, greeting all with a positive attitude. So looking around this building, it's obvious that Deb takes meticulous care of this facility, so she's great. Personally, I told her this before I came up here. So in my career, I've supervised 400 employees, directly supervised. She is on top 1%, I told her that, I mean, easily. So I want to make sure that you know that Deb makes sure every detail is attended to, every meeting is, she comes 24 hours a day sometimes. She's great. So on a personal note, I just had to change this speech because on a personal note, Deb's daughters, both of whom are expecting, one was this month, she just had her daughter on Easter Sunday. The other is expecting in June. So Deb, from all of us, a heartfelt thank you for your outstanding contributions to Farmington Community.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say a quick thank you to Jen for nominating me and for everyone in all my buildings and even out of my buildings for all their kind words. Thank you.
Now, at this time, we'll take a break so that we can all come out and greet you properly.
This is Deb's place. It's her calendar. No one does anything that's not on the calendar. If I ever want, you're not on my calendar.
So you had to trick her.
So mad, she had a PTFI note. This is, who is in here?
That's funny.
And then came out and...
That's hilarious.
That's awesome.
Yeah, she does a nice job taking pictures.
Congratulations to all the winners, and we'd love to take just a quick break.
We got one more.
We got one more? Oh, oh, yeah, that's right, Deb, right?
Yeah, okay. Okay, I'd like to now welcome up Mr. John Barth, our Director of Facilities, to introduce our Support Person of the Year. And Luke.
Good evening, Board members. Dr. Coffin? So as Director of Facilities Management and representing the entire school district, it's my honor and privilege to introduce Deb King.
Yeah!
Who has been chosen by a district committee as Farmington Public Schools Support Person of the Year 2025. So now, I'm going to embarrass Deb. So Deb has been a district employee since 2003, so 22 years. She excelled in many roles here in Farmington, including as a noon aide, a parking attendant, a hall monitor, and as a custodian. She has been the head custodian here at Maxfield Education Center since 2022. Colleagues of Deb shared that she has made outstanding contributions to the custodian team and has a tremendous positive impact on staff, students, and families. She is known for her dedication, strong work ethic, and ability to exceed expectations. A colleague in her building shared, beyond her outstanding work ethic, Deb is known for her friendly and approachful attitude. She is always courteous and helpful, greeting all with a positive attitude. So looking around this building, it's obvious that Deb takes meticulous care of this facility, so she's great. Personally, I told her this before I came up here. So in my career, I've supervised 400 employees, directly supervised. She is on top 1%, I told her that, I mean, easily. So I want to make sure that you know that Deb makes sure every detail is attended to, every meeting is, she comes 24 hours a day sometimes. She's great. So on a personal note, I just had to change this speech because on a personal note, Deb's daughters, both of whom are expecting, one was this month, she just had her daughter on Easter Sunday. The other is expecting in June. So Deb, from all of us, a heartfelt thank you for your outstanding contributions to Farmington Community.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say a quick thank you to Jen for nominating me and for everyone in all my buildings and even out of my buildings for all their kind words. Thank you.
Now, at this time, we'll take a break so that we can all come out and greet you properly.
This is Deb's place. It's her calendar. No one does anything that's not on the calendar. If I ever want, you're not on my calendar.
So you had to trick her.
So magic, you had a PTFI note. This is, who is in here?
That's funny.
And then came out and...
That's hilarious.
That's awesome.
Yeah, she does a nice job taking pictures.
From Bill Lubeaway.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. I may pull you up.
That's I see that Colleen's here, too.
Okay, perfect. Thanks so much. All right, I think we are ready, everybody?
You can maybe explain that, Cal. You can explain.
All right, thank you for allowing us that recess. We are now going to move on in our agenda, to our agenda. Item four, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Sub moved.
Support. Motion to approve the agenda made by Dr. Turner, supported by Mrs. Smith. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes. We'll now move to announcements. Just have a few. Welcome back after a short break. Wanted to acknowledge a few things. First, April is Stress Awareness Month. It is also Autism Acceptance Month. It is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, Arab American Heritage Month, and Financial Literacy Month, and we will recognize all of those. Coming up in May, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and we want to encourage people to promote self-care and supporting one another. It is also Jewish American Heritage Month, and Teacher Appreciation Week is the first week in May. Please be sure to recognize your teachers with, at a minimum, a simple thank you for all of the work that they do. And then finally, as we round out the last month of our school year, June is National Gun Violence Awareness Month, and usually, for the first Friday in June, we acknowledge that by wearing orange. I also wanted to acknowledge that Farmington High School has a musical coming up. It's called "Once Upon a Mattress," and the dates for that are Thursday, April 24th, Friday, April 25th, and Saturday, April 26th. All shows start at 7:30. General seating tickets are available at the door and through the box office at (248) 888-7274. That's (248) 888-7274, just so that maybe you'll remember. All right. I've said this before, but I believe that our schools have fabulous art programs, and if you haven't been to a musical, a show, a play, a music jazz fest, you are really, really missing out, so I encourage you to look into that. And then finally, I wanted to reiterate that we will have a board vacancy coming up here soon, and I wanted to start to describe that process. I believe I described it a bit in our last meeting, but I wanted to give you some more concrete dates. We expect that applications to apply for that board vacancy will come out the first week in May. We are targeting May 1st, but give us little grace. We expect that we will receive applications throughout the month of May. We will let you know whether there's a two, three, or four-week window for those applications. We expect to interview in early June, and we expect to make decisions regarding board appointment, regarding a board appointment by June 17th. If anyone is interested in more information, please feel free to email me. That's terrywithanIweems@fpsk12.net. That's right. All right, that ends my report. We will now move to our first public comment. As a reminder, thank you, for public comment, members are welcome to address the board. Each person will have three minutes. There will be a timer on the screen. Please address your comments to the board and speak directly into the microphone, please, so that our television listeners can hear you. And if your comment is related to a student or a staff member, please use caution in stating names of individuals where protection of privacy would be appropriate. Generally, the board listens respectfully to comments. We hear you, but generally, the board does not respond to public comment. In some cases, it might be appropriate for someone to follow up with you to address your concerns. We're going to start with Bill Lubeaway and then Eugene Greenstein. These are the only two public comment cards that I have at this moment. If you'd like to make public comment, please fill out a card and bring it to the bowl here at the end, next to Colleen Scripture's name. There is another opportunity for public comment, but you may only make public comment one time during a meeting. So if you don't want to do it this time, you have another opportunity towards the end, later on in the agenda. Welcome, Mr. Lubeaway.
Good afternoon. I have two areas to talk about. One is a Mackinac Center report, which they do every couple of years. It's the 2022 and '24 Farmington Grades 3 through 8 Test Scores, standardized for low-income student scores. You all have a copy of it at the board. I put it up on the screen, but I can't do that. I might mention that our highest score in there is a C for the Farmington Steam Academy, and the bottom of the rack is Wood Creek Elementary School. It's a D, and it's 1937th in the state. I'd be glad to discuss this with you at your convenience. Second area I was working on is, in looking at the math program that was proposed last time, I went poking through the math statistics to see what the effect of Common Core might be. And as I did that in the second package, there are three pages. The first one is the Mathematics State Snapshot Report. It's very comprehensive, and it covers all the statistics you might, I might want to see. I'd be glad to discuss that with you at your convenience. I want to point out two things. One is the average score compared to other states, and the Michigan is, or Michigan, yeah, Michigan is pretty much right in the middle, or no, below the average for the nation. And what I was looking for was Common Core to see if there was any effect, and I looked at that chart on the right side of the page, and about 2010, Obama introduced Common Core and spread that through the country, so I was looking for an effect. Did it increase math performance or not? And if you look at the years roughly '13 through '19, that would be the time period that for the fourth graders, which is what this covers, did it make a difference? In Michigan, I don't know what made a difference, but we went down while the rest of the country kind of slipped a little bit. So that's Michigan in the first page. Page two is compared to a very good state, Massachusetts, and it scores, and what I did was, I put those together in page three. I overlaid Massachusetts with Michigan, and you can see why Michigan's ranked 41st. They're well below average, and we're certainly not even close to Massachusetts at the top the best.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Greenstein.
Good afternoon. My little talk is a little different from what I handed out, but it complements it. When I worked for a living, I had to make multimillion-dollar decisions to resolve problems and not jeopardize our customer within a timeframe of a day or two. While I appreciate the hard work put in by the staff to evaluate the proposed text and curriculum for the new math program, there are too many open issues from my perspective to make a decision at this point. The risk is too high to bet on a multi-year, multi-subject program without more information. We certainly have a month or two to firm up our information. When we made the literacy decisions, we knew the root cause problem was the use of whole language, the Lucy Hawkins approach, instead of the science-reading phonics approach. Therefore, the issue was picking a text, not understanding the root cause. We understood that. There was a lot of literature on the issue, which I availed myself of, as did FPS when we made that decision. I don't know why our students are performing poorly in numeracy. I have not seen any evidence that the proposed text slash curriculum, however you like to phrase it, is going to make a significant difference or fixes the root cause compared to the present text. I also, you know, this also goes across multiple years, math and algebra and geometry. There is debate between using Common Core or traditional math. The email I sent you has several pages from a book called "The Great Classroom Collaxpus," which was written last year, and it highlights the difference between those two approaches, and you can look at that at your leisure. Per the 415 presentation, the new text will need to be supplemented by other materials to address students who may have problems. The collaboration process, as described based on my experience, creates a doer versus watcher situation. To learn the new material, instead of the correct method being taught in the classroom by the teacher, and then the students doing homework in class individually, and then discussing their results and assisting each other in getting the correct answer. We learn by doing, especially with paper and pencil. There's been lots of studies that says that writing puts it into your head, and whoever has the pencil learns. So this curriculum collaboration approach up front, somebody's learning, but not everybody, and I'm concerned about the poor performers. Why was the material picked over the other solution? We didn't hear why. And then, of course, the question is, what are we doing for K through 5? One needs to start with a solid foundation. There are performance issues there, too. So my view is the decision needs further study. A million dollars is a lot of money, and there are a lot of questions to answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment for our first public comment period? Any further public comment? Seeing none, we will now move to our next agenda item, which is items from the secretary. Dr. Turner?
Thank you. The board has received communications regarding, one, a letter from the University of Maryland's Department of African-American Studies concerning the book "Smart Discipline: How Effective Districts Tackle Misbehavior and Keep Students Learning." We also received questions submitted for consideration at the May 13, 2025 Community Dialogue on Student Achievement. We received communications regarding concerns about the lack of public discussion on public comments, correspondence, and the structure of community dialogue practices. We also received four White House Education Executive Orders and related board discussions. The board acknowledges communication and response when appropriate. A list of correspondences can be found in the board packet. Therefore, the issue was picking a text, not understanding the root cause. We understood that. There was a lot of literature on the issue, which I availed myself of, as did F P S when we made that decision. I don't know why our students are performing poorly in numeracy. I have not seen any evidence that the proposed text curriculum, however you like to phrase it, is going to make a significant difference or fixes the root cause compared to the present texts. I also, you know, this also goes across multiple years, math and algebra and geometry. There is debate between using Common Core traditional math. The email I sent you has several pages from a book called The Great Classroom Collaxba, which was written last year, and it highlights the difference between those two approaches. You can look at that at your leisure. Per the 415 presentation, the new text will need to be supplemented by other materials to address students who may have problems. The collaboration process, as described based on my experience, creates a doer versus watcher situation. To learn the new material, instead of the correct method being taught in the classroom by the teacher, and then the students doing homework in class individually, and then discussing their results and assisting each other in getting the correct answer. We learn by doing, especially with paper and pencil. There's been lots of studies that says that writing puts it into your head. And whoever has the pencil learns. So this curriculum collaboration approach up front, somebody's learning, but not everybody. And I'm concerned about the poor performers. Why was the material picked over the other solution? We didn't hear why. And then, of course, the question is, what are we doing for K through five? One needs to start with a solid foundation. There are performance issues there, too. So my view is the decision needs further study. A million dollars is a lot of money, and there are a lot of questions to answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment for our first public comment period? Any further public comment? Seeing none, we will now move to our next agenda item, which is items from the secretary. Dr. Turner?
Thank you. The board has received communications regarding, one, a letter from the University of Maryland's Department of African-American Studies concerning the book Smart Discipline: How Effective Districts Tackle Misbehavior and Keep Students Learning. We also received questions submitted for consideration at the May 13, 2025 Community Dialogue on Student Achievement. We received communications regarding concerns about the lack of public discussion on public comments, correspondence, and the structure of community dialogue practices. We also received four White House Education Executive Orders and related board discussions. The board acknowledges communication and response when appropriate. A list of correspondences can be found in the board packet accessible on the Farmington Public Schools website. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to legislative update. Dr. Blau?
Yes. I'd like to point out that the Common Core State Standards were developed in the early 2000s. This is pertaining to the four bills that were passed by the House regarding K-12 curriculum and assessment. So our Common Core State Standards were developed in the early 2000s, and they were generally implemented around 2010, although prior to that, some states and some school districts did experiment with them, and many textbook companies started putting out materials aligned with the Common Core State Standards in advance of 2010, when many states adopted the Common Core State Standards. We currently, in the state of Michigan, have what are called the Michigan Common Core State Standards, but they're very, very similar, and many states have done the same. The decision about what is required in terms of our curriculum is not a decision that can be made at the federal level. So no president has the legislative power to set curriculum. That is a state-level decision. But individual school districts also do not have the power to just decide to abandon the Common Core State Standards. So I just wanted to clarify that. The power to determine curricula for public education has always legislatively rested with each state and has not been, has been prohibited by law from being dictated at the federal level. However, in our state, we have what I think is some very good news regarding that. There are four bills that have passed in the House, our state House. One is an updated Michigan Merit Curriculum that expands elective options in math, science, and the arts, adds a two-credit future skills block, a half credit of personal finance, a half credit of workplace development, plus one flexible credit, and raises science to four credits, beginning with the class of 2029. It also allows up to 15 specialty high schools to waive certain English social studies credits in creative ways. There is a state assessment pilot also, and again, this has only passed the House so far. This authorizes in the 2025-26 school year, pilots in up to 60 school districts, evenly split between rural, suburban, and urban districts, to test two interim plus summative models of assessment of student learning with a cap of one hour per interim and three hours total for summative assessments. Results will be returned to teachers within 14 days, and data must be incorporated into educator evaluation. So I don't know if we are able to get involved in the pilot project, but that's something we can explore. There's also the M D E, Michigan Department of Education, is to contract with assessment vendors and distribute the pilot funds. And finally, the Science of Reading and Elementary Math Standards. This would require K through six reading curricula to align with Science of Reading principles by the 2026-27 school year, so we are way ahead of that curve, and establishes a state panel to rewrite K-5 math standards, problem-based learning, dyscalculia interventions for adoption in 2027-28. So that is also very good news. So this is a movement, not necessarily away from the Common Core State Standards, but an updating of them based upon the new Science of Reading and what we know about the Science of Learning with regards to math teaching and learning. So these are, these are good, good things in our state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to district updates. Dr. Coffin?
Thank you, President Weems. This month has really been filled with significant events and achievements across our district, reflecting our commitment to innovation, student development, and engagement with our community. A group of our administrators recently had the chance to attend the ASU G S B conference, where they engaged with leaders in education and technology. This conference allowed them to visit innovative school campuses, interact with ed tech companies supporting K-12 education, and explore the impact of A I in our schools. The insights gained will help us enhance our practices and integrate new technologies as appropriate into our curriculum. We are proud to announce that Farmington High School, Longacre Elementary, and Forest Elementary have all been awarded grants as part of our partnership with the Michigan Education Workforce Initiative, M U E, and Arizona State University. These grants will enable our schools to implement staffing models that embrace a teaming approach and also provide funding to redesign summer learning spaces. This initiative aims to create a more collaborative and effective learning environment for all of our students. Opportunities for our students to, engagement continue to flourish. At Farmington High School, had the opportunity to meet with Ms. Jen Michaels and her teacher cadet program that have been really inspiring to our future educators, all of whom are enrolled in post-secondary, or in their college at a teacher college to continue to become educators. Additionally, our Warner's Girls Only Leadership Development, or GOLD event, I was asked to be the keynote speaker, for eighth and ninth-grade young ladies, and we really provide valuable insights and challenges and the rewards of women in leadership roles, fostering, again, a supportive community for our aspiring leaders. Early this month, earlier this month, we celebrated our middle school and high school students during our Rise and Thrive event. This year, we were honored to have a former recipient of the Rise and Thrive Award to be our guest speaker, and she shared her inspiring journey from graduating from Harrison High School to currently pursuing her Ph.D., motivating our current recipients to strive for excellence in their own pursuits. Congratulations to all of our students who continue to have amazing successes in our C T E programs. This includes our DECA, B P A, H O S A, and Skills USA state qualifiers. In addition, our HackBots again made it to Worlds for the fourth consecutive year and were awarded the prestigious Quality Award, recognizing their exceptional engineering and attention to detail. We also will have three students being recognized as outstanding C T E Students of the Year at Oakland Schools. That's happening on Monday, April 28. They are Destiny Powell, she's being recognized in finance, Ariana Wolf in health science, and Kinsey Whitefield, also in health science. We are so proud of these and many more accomplishments that really highlight the dedication and talent of our F P S students. Finally, I'd like to invite everyone to our inaugural business and community showcase, which will take place Wednesday, May 7, from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Farmington High School. This is a free event, thanks in part to our wonderful sponsors, the Greater Farmington Area Chamber of Commerce, T-Mobile, G L P Financial Group, Farmington Family Y M C A, and Beztac. If you are interested in serving as an additional sponsor, or anyone would like to have a table as a vendor representing your organization, be businesses or nonprofits, please go to our website. There's a box there you can see. It's going to say Focus Business and Community Showcase, and there's additional information. And as we move forward, I'm really excited about the opportunities that lie ahead for our students and our innovative initiatives we are implementing across the schools, and just thank the board and the community for their continued support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you want to move on to the?
I sure will, yes. Next, I'd like to welcome Mr. Paul Wills from Plant Moran Real Point to the podium to share information on the 2020 bond quarterly update.
Thank you, Dr. Coffin, President Weems, and board members. Up on your screen, you're going to see our quarterly dashboard report. So again, the last one that was presented was actually January, and so we're going to kind of take a walk through the four slides, talk about some of the great work that the districts have done, both at the board level as well as the administration level. So the first slide, what you have is really a breakdown of the $109 million from the 2020 bonds. So you can see, majority of that, 71%, is roughly construction and district-wide. The next darker blue is technology and security. After that, we've got buses, and then furniture fixtures and equipment from that perspective. On the next slide, one of the things you'll see is a breakdown of that $109 million. And so for those that remember 2020, we're in COVID, the district actually made the right decision, actually decreased the mileage rate a little bit to create the $98 million, which was well-supported by the community. But more importantly, being good stewards of the 2018 bond proceeds, that was the second series from the 2015 bond, if you will. So where does that money come from? It comes from unused contingencies. It comes from escalation, or I'll call it avoidance of cost escalation, but more importantly, the board changing their policy for capital, allowing to do a review and approval at a single board meeting, because if you remember, it was very hard to have materials being held for more than 15 to 20 days. So again, I commend the board to be able to actually be ahead of that curve, if you will, going forward. There's some insurance refund checks for some damages that was done previously. E-rate funds, so again, as a district improves technology throughout the district, they do qualify for E-rate refunding, which then gets put back in the capital bonds. At the end of the day, because again, quick decisions by the board, quick decisions by the administration team, really focusing on the programs, we'll be able to generate about $3.5 million of additional interest earnings from this current bond. That's currently allocated for the bid packs that we'll talk about, but we're going to talk a bit about that in strategic planning. So right now, we've got about $16.6 million remaining. A lot of that's being spoken for with transportation, some of the work that was approved in December, also some of the scoreboards and lights going forward, and more importantly, Bid Pack 17, which is some of the site work that you'll see tonight. From a funding standpoint, you have complied with your spending requirements from the Department of Treasury, so the 85% expenditure rate was exceeded, which is awesome. On the next slide is the wheels that kind of show you the variety of different spends. So again, the 71% are roughly $77.5 million of construction. You're about 95% expended through there. Next line item would be the $3.9 million of furniture, of which you're roughly 95% also expenditures. And then again, with buses. So again, that was something previous to the two bonds used to come out of general funds. So the district made a very conscious decision to not buy all buses at one time. You do that in a series, so they don't all come due in the next 10 to 12 years going forward. And very similar to technology and security, again, working on the infrastructure. There's a replacement schedule that's going to come out of the bond that helps you, you know, save the general fund for programming specifically. So the good news is we're well on task to have those expenditures going forward. And on the last slide is really just a chart that kind of shows Bid Packs 14 and 15, which again, were the scoreboards and lights, both middle school and high school, the transportation renovations. And more importantly, if approved tonight, Bid Pack 17, which are some site improvements at Visions, Farmington Central High School, and at East Middle School site improvements. So with that, I'll turn back over to President Weems, Dr. Coffin, and the board for any questions on the quarterly dashboard report.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
I don't have any questions, but I want to thank you, as always, for all the work that you have done. I have had the opportunity to go over to Farmington Visions a couple of weeks ago, and as a former employee there, that building is, wow. I mean, you guys did a great job in that building. You put a lot of thought into it. You thought of every student that has a disability. The work is just simply beautiful. If any board member would like to go over and see, I'm sure that Doreen would be happy to see you. And also Farmington Central. I actually got to paint the other day over there, but it was, that building is still beautiful as well. So thank you for everything that you've done. Our buildings are state-of-the-art. They're gorgeous. They're beautiful. But I encourage this board to go and take a look at Visions. They would be shocked, mainly Ms. Weems and Dr. Turner, because they know what it looked like prior to, but to go and take a visit now, they would be shocked. And it's a good shock. It's not anything bad. So thank you, Paul.
No, Justice Smith, honestly, it is a team approach. I mean, again, from the board level, from the community support, administration team, and obviously with John Barth and Jennifer Kaminsky, who are kind of the core, they're really kind of like from a financial and operations, it is truly a team support. I think you see the great teamwork and the results of that, so appreciate being part of that conversation.
Henry?
Yeah, just a quick question. As far as the scoreboards for the middle schools and the high schools, you have the closeout September through November. Is it the goal to have them ready to go when school starts in September?
Yeah, actually, it would be completed in the end of August. We'll go through punch lists, and then you've got financial closeouts and warranties and things of that nature, but training of the staff and things of that nature will all take place prior to the start of the school year, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm also really pleased with all of the work that's been done and how really these dollars have been stretched, frankly, to do a lot more with the business office and the interest earned and, and, and. The accountant in me, though, you know, thinks through like, okay, what's next? And I'm also pleased that the business office and the district has been saving in the sense of including regular amounts for building and maintenance in its budget on an annual basis. But I am also aware that we spend more in this area than we have funding for out of the general fund. So we'll certainly be looking to understand what our long-term plans are to ensure that not only our buildings are maintained, which is what this bond was for. We've gotten to do a lot of really creative and unique things with it, but it was meant to fix roofs and parking lots and boilers and HVAC and all of the kind of, in my opinion, unsexy stuff. But we've been able to do some really great things with it. I am very much looking forward to providing a really welcoming environment for our students and aligning our programming needs with our building needs. And I know that that's our next step, and as a board, we'll have to be giving thought to what we want our school district to look like, you know, five to 10 years from now. Thank you for that, and I know that that might segue into our next conversation.
Absolutely.
Around how we're going to, what we're going to consider for the remaining bond dollars.
So I would also, I would like to ask Mr. Bill Weinrock from T M P Architecture to join. Mr. Wills at the podium and talk just about that, the F P S long-term facility planning.
Absolutely. So as President Weems mentioned, the main focus of the 2020 bond was truly critical infrastructure, it was warm, safe, dry. Yes, there are some great interior spaces for that, but when you take a look at that $3.5 million, it's really time to take a look at future focusing in terms of what does the community want, what do the students, the parents, the teachers want? So I know the district's gone out for a survey that really talked about expanding programmatic spaces for the students from that standpoint. So Bill Weinrock, myself, Bill's with T M P Architecture, he was actually the architect on Almeida Expansion, the Early Childhood Center. So again, that future-forward thinking. We started the early elementary in education, now we're going to be focusing at the high school from one standpoint. So part of the long-term strategy is about every five years, a district will update its capital plan. And this is really a 10-year vision of what does our $2.2 million, or 2.2 million square feet of space, our 400 acres really, truly need. I know you did participate in the School Finance Research Foundation project conducted by the state, so we do have what that independent lens looks like from a critical infrastructure. But that's just one building block. The other is what do you want to do programmatically? So again, with Dr. Coffin's lens, working with her administration team, you as the board, what's happening on a national level? What's happening at the local level? What have other districts done, you know, from that perspective? And so what we look at is taking a look at enrollment. We take a look at building utilization and capacities. Those are the foundation blocks. And then working with Bill Weinrock of what do those spaces potentially could be, but it's a funding effect. So you're going to talk about programs collaboratively and collectively with that assessment, if you will. So the first couple of months is more data-driven, and really the last four to six months is really the conversations of the academic lens, like what does STEM and STEAM opportunities look like at the high school level? Do the students stay in the building, or are they potentially partnering with local businesses and they're going to their sites? We see some of those trends with various districts. So again, you're going to have a lot of interactions with different committees and different community members. So think of this as a 10-year capital strategic plan, but really implementing and focusing on programs, specifically with STEM and STEAM. So at the end of the day, you really can't go wrong with creating these collaborative spaces, because programs will change. I remember, you know, working on a C T building, like, we need this. Well, guess what? Small engines are now all battery. But those lab spaces were designed to actually now incorporate some E V technology without having to redo the walls, the infrastructure, et cetera. That's why I always appreciate Bill Weinrock's and his team's expertise, because they work with a plethora of districts around southeast Michigan, actually around Midwest, of how to create those really open collaborative spaces. So it's really two parts to it, and I'll let Bill talk a little bit about what's proposed for the 3.5 million, some of the timelines. So with that, Bill, you want to talk about the C T, STEM STEAM?
First of all, I want to thank you for inviting us here tonight. I am Bill Weinrock with T M P Architecture. I am Bill Weinrock with TMP Architects. The last time I got to work with the district was with Alameda Early Childhood Center, as you said. So I'm grateful to be back in the district. We started out, John and Luke had contacted our firm and contacted me about coming and taking a look at Farmington and North Farmington. You have a lot of great programs at both buildings, and wanted to see what could be done in this future thinking. We've got CTE in the building, we've got classrooms around the space. How do we cohesively bring that program together? So we're talking about STEAM, STEM in the facilities. We did take a look at both North Farmington and Farmington. And what we found, North Farmington has a lot of great space, but at the time, we're looking at all of the directions or all of the possible potential avenues. There's a lot of shifting around at North Farmington that would have to be done to create a space up front. What we found is Farmington High School actually has a great space out back at the northeast corner that would allow for a multipurpose room, large enough to house a STEAM program, multipurpose, while also accommodating your robotics program. What we find in most schools, and what we find here in this district, is robotics is working with all of your CTE program spaces, but they're in the hallway doing a lot of their programming, a lot of their testing, a lot of their work. We are working with a number of districts creating these multipurpose spaces. What we find is robotics has a great space to work at night, but during the day, we've got a lot of square footage that could be a space where multiple programs can come together. STEAM is a program philosophy where all of these different CTE programs come together and work together within the schools. So your science, technology, engineering, arts, they've got a space to bring multiple classrooms together and work, doing projects, a nice floor plan to lay out. Farmington High School's got great architecture programs, engineering programs, those spaces are great, but it's hard to bring classes in, move furniture around, and do program-based learning, project-based learning. This program is roughly, or the proposal is to create roughly a 5,000-square-foot building at your current, what we want to call the CTE wing of North Farmington. And we've got land in the back to be able to do that.
Farmington.
Farmington.
Yes.
Sorry. Farmington High School. There is land there to be able to do that work. We presented some ballpark figures to the district, and it fits within budgets. We're just going through the programs now to figure out, you know, talking to teachers and everyone to figure out what is best for that program. So moving forward, that's part of that future think, and bringing new programming to the school.
So kind of next steps, again, is based on the board, dashboard update is again verifying a full picture. Not just what is construction, but what is the furniture? What is the equipment, the technology? Are there any useful life things that should be considered? So for instance, you have a piece of machinery that supports a STEM or STEAM, is that a five-year investment or a 10-year investment, or is it a two-year investment? So giving the board a full picture of what this potentially be, I'm sure making an informed decision for that. So again, our next walkthrough probably with the Facilities and Finance Committee here, next month or two, to show, hey, here's where the layout's at, here's a couple potential exterior renderings. I think it's great, because if you're familiar with where the northeast corner is, it's kind of by the football field and the track and the, and so people will be able to see it. And again, we've seen a lot of great examples of connectivity between the interior and the exterior of what's going on. So if you've got things that are happening in the evening with the STEM, and there's an athletic event, they're actually seeing this interaction going on. So that'll be kind of the next steps, is what's the floor plan, some of the elevations, again, reconfirming that budget and schedule. But just very exciting that, again, the district has that forward thinking of STEM and STEAM. And again, using the current finesses you have by just being great stewards and fiscal responsible as a board. So with that, I'll turn back to President Weems and the board for any questions.
Any questions or comments on that? Yes?
I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Trexel and maybe some of our HAB box parents and students might be involved at some point to make sure that the space that we're creating that they will also be able to use is...
Top priority, right.
...sufficient for their...
Mr. Trexel, Mr. Skodek, we're part of giving us the specs of what would be required.
Awesome.
And sometimes, again, I work with a lot of different robotics teams, like they are seven days a week from January through competition day. So again, looking at accessibility, securing that space, what are the hours of that going forward? So again, I'll be part of that operational lens, as well as part of that conversation. But I appreciate the inquiry, and it's always great to have that vision, so.
And one of the things I wanted to highlight, too, is the Finance Committee, we really wanted to make sure that the space was something that would be utilized by all the students throughout the school day, not just something set aside for one particular activity. So creating this multi-use, multipurpose space aligns with our forward vision and, you know, our profile and the things that we're trying to do to be innovative and leading around the country, really.
Thank you for bringing that up. I just wanted to also give some context for people who are interested, for transparency's sake. We had a really good conversation at the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, and I forget what other meeting it was there.
Our retreat.
Yes, at our retreat. It is, I think, the board's goal to be more forward-thinking with respect to use of our space. And I don't think any of us are interested in addressing and tackling requests or issues in a vacuum or one-on-one. What we really need, and what you're going to help us with, is understanding comprehensively what our space could be. And the only way we'd be sort of supportive of moving forward in this direction is if this fits into that vision. No one wants to do something in isolation. What we really want to do is develop a comprehensive understanding of what our programming needs are, what our building needs are, and how we can support all of our students. Clearly, there's been a huge interest in STEAM and STEM, and so this feels like the right approach. But we definitely want to make sure that we're being thoughtful about what we're doing going forward and how we can best use this space versatility.
Yeah, it's interesting. I know a lot of districts, when they start this process, they may also reach out to some of their business partners that are looking for those, you know, those STEM/STEAM-type positions. I know in Southfield, they'd rather grab a junior senior in high school, because they can't wait four years for this individual to join their robotics slash, you know, STEAM programs. They are actually paying for associate's degrees. So again, it's that, how do you collaborate with the whole community? But again, also providing that space right on site for those particular students and staff, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate the forward-thinking comment.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to reports from board committees. Mrs. Heinrich?
Yes. The Finance and Facilities Committee met on Thursday, April 17th, with myself and Mr. Thomas Holland, President Terry Weems are on the committee, along with various people from the district. And we reviewed Bid Pack Number 17 recommendation, and that is actually the last formal Bid Pack out of the 2002 and 2020 bond money. And so there is going to be site renovations to Visions Unlimited, Farmington Central High School, and East Middle School. And I think also that's going to be a discussion item. Yeah, so I don't want to steal the thunder on that. But it's just kind of exciting that during the discussion, we'll be able to share, part of the Bid Pack is going to put in a basketball court at East Middle School. And under the discussion, we'll share how that came about, which was kind of exciting. We also talked about the fiscal year 2026 Oakland Schools budget resolution, and that is a discussion item. And so Jennifer Kaminsky is going to prepare some highlights from that. She attended that, and we all have a copy of the Oakland Schools budget for us to peruse. And if there's any questions, we can get those submitted, and we'll have a board resolution that will be due by June 1st. And so we will be actually voting on that. And then we had a long-term facility planning update, and part of that is Paul will just shared this $3.5 million bond money that we really were able to save by reviewing and approving purchases. So thank you for being forward-thinking for that. And so we had information on the addition at Farmington High School that they're going to be researching. And we also were talking about high-level district plans for future facilities and prioritizing instructional vision for future educational needs, and making sure that everything fits in with our strategic plan and long-term planning. Future agenda items, we have a budget review scheduled for May, and if needed, there was discussion on, there's a possibility of an electrical bus grant the district is looking at, whether or not they want to apply for that. And so if needed, that will be a future agenda item. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think if there are no questions, we'll move on to discussion items. Dr. Coffin?
All right. So, Mr. Will's, you get to join us again, along with John Barth and Jennifer Kaminsky when she gets back, as well as Kathy, I don't know if Kathy's here, from McCarthy and Smith to talk about Bid Pack 17. So Ms. Heinrich, or trustee Heinrich gave a little tease to what you're going to talk about, so.
Good evening again, board members. Dr. Coffin, again, this isn't a real sexy part of the bond projects, however, it's something very much needed. So what it amounts to, just in a nutshell, is we're doing some asphalt work, we're doing the east lot, which a lot of staff park over at Central, so that's the east lot. We're also doing the west lot, again, staff parking over at Visions, and we're actually recommending some alternates. Oh, I forgot to mention, we are doing East Middle School. And Jennifer will talk more about that whole process with the students involved. But we're also going to be recommending, I'll let Paul talk more about this, we're going to recommend, because we're under budget, the two alternates, which in a nutshell are adding a walking path for Visions that Doreen has asked for for the last couple of years, and also taking out the south parking lot of Visions, which has deteriorated to such a point that it's no longer sustainable and really not needed. We're going to turn that into grass space, green space. So we're looking to approve alternates, and we'll discuss more about the whole bid process, Paul will. But really, we see this as a win-win to finish up some of the big asphalt projects we couldn't do before. And the reason we couldn't do them before, because Eagle doesn't allow us to do more than one acre of disturbance on any particular site. And if we go back, like, we could go back in '24 at Visions, they would have questioned, well, you should have done this before, you should have asked for a waiver, whatever. So we decided to postpone it. Now they can't say a thing, and we can finally do the staff lot over at Visions that's in desperate need of repair. There's also a sidewalk that goes to the school that floods every year, so they're going to regrade that, and so that'll be done perfectly for staff to get into the building. Facility has since put down an orange mat, which is sort of perforated, or whatever you want to call it, so there's, they can walk in it, they can run wheelchairs over it, but it's not ideal, obviously. So that's all coming with your approval, hopefully this summer, and get that all straightened out finally. But I'll turn it over to Paul to talk about the whole bid process and the great results we got.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. And that's another item that, when you take a look at the number of bid packages, so as trustee Heinrich mentioned, this is Bid Pack 17. I do want to commend McCarthy Smith, again, who is the construction manager. They've been repeatedly been able to get multiple bid packages for multiple bids going out. So we had over 12 bids for just this particular project, as Mr. Barth mentioned. Best part is, is TNM Asphalt and Concrete has actually worked on previous bid packs successfully. They were the lowest responsible bidder. And more importantly, you're able to incorporate, you know, the two different voluntary alternates, which keeps you under that budget from that perspective. So really, the best news is, you got great bid coverage, it's a little bit under budget, which is always great to hear. You're able to reduce some alternative work from that perspective. And if you go back to the dashboard, we asked, we're looking at completing this work before the start of school. That's why, again, it's important to be able to present to the board and have you take consideration for that work to take place going forwardly. But more importantly, it's always exciting when you can get some students involved in the process. So with that, I'm going to turn to Mrs. Kaminsky, who's going to talk a little bit about the student involvement at East. So I'm Jennifer.
Right. Good evening. We wanted to share the impact the students' presentation for their outdoor space, you know, had on this project in particular. So seventh grade math classes under Deb Colanchi, as well as Jennifer Franklin, did a survey, I guess, last year, I think it was, on outdoor space. What do kids, what are kids looking for, what would they like to see outside? So if you're familiar with East, really, all of their facilities, other than the baseball diamond, are across the bridge. So the track, the football field, any of the fields for use. And so the students invited Mr. Cadeau and myself to their class in early March, and presented us with the proposal and some ideas as to what they'd like to see in their outdoor space. So they used a lot of math skills, science skills, and then also provided us with some information on how East was different from all of the other middle schools, if you will. So if you recall, we used to have four middle schools. Power and Warner are turned into five, six buildings back in the day. They received playground, as well as other updates during that time. Dunkle turned into K8 STEAM. They received playground upgrades, as well as other updates. So East was the only building that was a middle school, went to a 7-8, went back to a 6-7-8. And we found that they did not have the same sort of facilities. They didn't have playground equipment, nor did they have access to basketball. And so the students, through various scenarios, showed us what they thought they could do. They did calculations, they had measurements, and did a really good job, you know, informing us as to why they felt they needed this space, as well the benefits. Phenomenal, and we told them that we would bring this back and look to see if there was anything we could do. So knowing we were doing these two paving projects, we quickly turned it over to the construction team and said, is there any way we can do the basketball court? That was really the only thing that could quickly be incorporated. And so they were able to make it happen, and we were able to include it in the bid. So this morning, Luke and John and I went to East Middle School, and we really just told the teachers that we wanted to, you know, have a little presentation for the students, talk about the process that we followed, and just get back to them, as we had said. So we, you know, kind of talked through what we did on our end, and then shared with them, we're going to put in a basketball court. And it was really funny, because the kids, Drew said they were all trying to be like really calm, and you could tell they were like, they just wanted to scream out and yell. So it was really exciting. John also brought in a rack of balls that were donated by McCarthy Smith, our construction manager, for use on this new basketball court. So we, you know, we talked about the importance of them bringing their ideas forward, that we maybe wouldn't always be able to incorporate it or make it happen, but we would definitely put it on a list for future consideration. So just wanted to share that as part of their learning and how we participated in that as well. And so this summer, they will be putting in a basketball court, and a picture of all of us this morning. So, all right, thank you. Any questions on this Bid Pack?
Just thank you. Thank you for hearing their voices.
If I can just add one thing, there was, so they did not know. We literally surprised them. And the teacher, Deb Colanchi, said, you know, we had them prepare, so that we may not get the answer that you wanted. And one of the young ladies said, isn't it just awesome that we're even here having, getting to have this conversation? So either way, how it ended up, they were ready. And so just the, just the experience for the students and how valuable it was, was amazing.
Mrs. Heinrich?
And I just want to, I mean, I think this is awesome, and I just want to go back to the visions and the walking path also, just because, you know, I mean, this basketball court is an, is an example of making outdoor spaces accessible to our students. And then we, sitting here, we don't think a paved walking path is that big of a deal, but Visions has a lot of students that are, you know, handicapped accessible. And so being able to have a space for all students to get outdoors and be able to navigate around in the outdoor space is really important. And so I'm glad that we're making that a priority and doing it.
And just to add to that, this was on Doreen's wish list when we first... And just to add to that, this was on Dorian's wish list when we first did Visions, but we couldn't, we were just, just under the one acre limit. We did that, the bus area where the buses park on that other end on the east end. So, that all being said, when we decided this has got to go forward, at some point, obviously, either we pay for it or bond dollars pay for it, it's a wide sidewalk. So, it's within the fences, but it can also accommodate wheelchairs. So, a lot of thought was put into this with Dorian's help to see what we could do for a longer walk path around the, it's basically behind the building, it's on the south side. But she's happy with that. I know she wants a little bit more walkway, we'll try to address internally. But this got us to that one acre that we needed to do this year, so she's pretty happy with that new wider walk path.
Can I just?
Mrs. Smith and then Mrs. Heinrich.
Over at Visions, you have the swings for the wheelchairs. Could you also think of putting those in over at East as well? I'm putting you on the spot, huh?
Yeah, we're actually looking, over at Visions, there were some, there's some minor issues going on with those wheelchair accessible swings and the swings themselves, right? So, we're addressing that with Sinclair Recreation. Dorian's aware of it. But your point is funding available, but we always want to address any ADA issues out there. So, that always comes first in terms of getting what's needed in the building.
Thank you. Mrs. Heinrich?
And this is just kind of an aside, but I want to throw it in while I'm thinking of it, and it's, isn't to blindside you or anything, but during the committee meeting, Mr. Hull mentioned that the walking path that the students walk to from school, or to school from the neighborhoods, that when it rains out, it becomes flooded and stuff. And so, maybe district-wide thinking, you know, for somebody from the district, I'm looking at John Barth, and you have a boot on, so you might not want to do the walking, to have somebody from the district actually walk the access that the students have. I remember when my students went to Flanders School, we always approached the school from the back of the building, and they didn't realize they, you know, I asked them about it, and they put a path in to make it accessible. So, as far as all of our buildings for future planning, to actually walk the routes for students and look and make sure that there's no problems that need to be addressed.
Yeah, we're trying to address that, Claudia, at East Building when we do bond, but again, but dollars are dollars, right? So, we can only do so much. And sidewalks is not as cheap as you think they are. So, we did that over at Steam. There were a couple of areas over at Steam, including right along the main road there, to reduce some of that triage hazards. That's the big thing. We will be addressing a lot of that this coming year. Talk to Luke about doing that in-house, some of the more dangerous areas. It's very hard when you've got flooded sidewalks, because then you're lifting the ground or doing something more significant, right? So, but we are looking at that, it's on our record.
Okay, all right. And it was just something that popped in my mind, and not to, I know I'm not supposed to.
No, thank you for raising it, yeah.
Maybe that's someplace where students could get involved also. Students at each building could identify some of those areas and maybe do some problem-solving too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just a few things. So, I'm normally not a fan of alternates. I don't believe that we need to spend the money, because it's there. But in most instances, I'm just being honest, in most instances, I've agreed with what you've done with alternates, and these are two really, really good examples. I am thrilled that the East students got to advocate for themselves. I want all students to know that we love that. I get emails from students all the time with classes that have projects, and they, you know, share what they want. And I, we love to hear a student voice. I do want to let students know that, you know, as cute as you are, it doesn't mean that you're going to get everything that you want, but you can ask, and you should be advocating for yourself. What I love about this, though, is how they identified and shared with us how they are not able to enjoy at the same rate as other schools are. And for that reason alone, I want to make sure that we have equity across our school buildings. And so, they're right, and I didn't realize it before, that they don't have the same type of facility or equipment outside that our other middle schools do. And so, I'm fully supportive, and I think I'm seeing nods of heads from the rest of my board members that they are as well. I do appreciate the comments around things that are a little bit more necessary, you know, the needs versus the wants. And so, addressing some of the walkways, I think, is a really important thing for us to be doing. And I know that you said that you'll take a look at it, and so I trust that you'll do that. I think that's all I had. Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate that.
Thank you. And Ms. Jennifer Kaminski will stay at the podium to discuss the Oakland Schools 2026 budget resolution.
All right. Well, and just on another note, today we received an update on the scoreboard package, I think Bid Pack 14. And so, all of the middle schools, their new scoreboards have been installed. So, they are on the field. They gave us a picture of the old scoreboard, as well as the new, and so that was exciting to see. So, work is happening now, as, you know, it can take place, so. Now, on to probably a more boring topic, the Oakland Schools budget review. That is exciting. So, on April 11th, Oakland County School Business Officials, Michelle Saunders, presented Oakland Schools budget, and their focus is really on their general education fund budget. But they do talk about also their career-focused education, as well as special education funds. And then, they have many others that they really just highlight. So, the board is required, prior to June 1st, to approve a resolution, either approving or disapproving Oakland Schools budget. And so, as I mentioned, April 11th, we received that overview of Oakland Schools budget. There is an opportunity for the board designate to go to a meeting tomorrow evening, to hear that same presentation, ask questions, if there are any. And so, this was a requirement put into place, I think, about 15 years ago, so that local education agencies knew what was included in the ISD's budget. So, just to highlight a couple of things on their general education fund is they do have an increase in property taxes of about 3.7%. That is how they receive the majority of their funding, as well as money from the state. That's also how the special education fund, as well as the career-focused education fund, receives its money. There is a county-wide millage that is levied on all districts, or all homeowners, all taxpayers within Oakland County. That money comes to Oakland schools, and then it is dispersed to local districts through certain formulas. So, we do receive our PA $18, you've heard me talk about that, in our budget, as well as CFE dollars, to help support our career and tech ed programs. So, again, there is a requirement that the board approve or disapprove of Oakland Schools' budget by June 1st, and a requirement that we provide you with this overview by May 31st. Again, they provide a five-year forecast on all of their funds as well, and they're in the same boat that we are, and they have to do their budget a little bit earlier to meet this requirement. So, there are a lot of unknowns as they're putting together their information. So, if you do have any questions, as that information was included in this board packet, their, their actual budget document, there's a, an overview memo from the superintendent, as well as a presentation that really highlights the big items in their budget. If you have any questions, you can send them to Dr. Coffin, and we can get those sent on to Oakland Schools for their response. And I can answer any questions.
Could you share with the community, you shared with us about how our district also benefits from the Oakland Schools in ways with the business office residency program. I just have notes on that and the numeracy project that is being supporting the districts. And I think we have, I think there's reading programs also that the districts get supported, and I'm not quite sure about that. And AI, I have a note on that, too. Just maybe so our public just hears a little bit about how we benefit.
Yep. So, Oakland Schools does provide subsidies to districts, whether it be for software. We participate in MyStar, it's our pupil accounting software. They have provided us with literacy funding in the past. We did participate in their program. They are funding a numeracy initiative this year to help districts, support districts across the county. And yes, we were able to take advantage of the business office residency program. We had an intern essentially with us for about eight months. And so, the idea is those individuals do three rotations, so they spend eight months with three different districts, to get them different opportunities, different experience, to try and address some of the need on the business manager's side as people are retiring. It's very hard to find people that are qualified to go into a school district. It's governmental accounting. There are a lot of nuances in school funding. And so, we don't see people coming out of public accounting anymore and heading for a school district like we used to. So, this is a way for Oakland Schools to try and help address that shortage that we're seeing on the business side of things.
Thank you so much. Don't see any further questions. We appreciate the report, and this will come back to us at the next meeting for approval.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move to our second opportunity for public comment. If you wish to make public comment, and you did not make public comment earlier, you are now invited to make public comment. Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda topic, which are action items. The first action item is secondary math adoption. And I know there were a number of questions the last time that we talked through this. I saw several board members who had some additional questions. I believe most of those questions got answered, but I will ask that someone from administration come up and give us a summary of this matter before we consider an action item. And then, we can move on to discussion.
Good evening, Board of Education and Dr. Kelly Coffin. Sorry for my voice today, just recovering from a little chest cold. So, I, there were a number of questions that did come in from the Board of Education, and I appreciated the opportunity to respond to all of your in-depth questions over the last two weeks. I'm wondering what specific areas you might want me to connect with. Maybe I'll start about the process?
I think we're all clear on the process.
Okay.
I think folks would really like to understand what is, what, why is the district considering a new math program? What led to that? And why do you believe this math program is going to address the, the issues that you raised, which required you to look at it in the first place? I know that we've all received the data related to math assessment, and we've all seen over the past several years, what's happening at the 11th grade level, particularly a decline in recent years, what we're seeing at the 7th grade level, and I believe the 6th grade level was also, 8th grade was also shared.
Yep.
So, maybe you can speak to that. I'm assuming that was part of the reason why you're considering another math program?
Exactly.
And I believe that is the primary question here. I think folks, based off of what I heard, were also interested in understanding how the district is comfortable, that this is what in fact will move the needle on math. And so, any data that you have related to that would be helpful. I know we all received also testimonials from teachers who were involved in the process, who actually saw it in practice, and gave us their information and testimonials about what they saw in the classroom. That was very helpful as well. But I think it would be all, it would be nice to level-set us in the why.
Wonderful. And if Colleen Stam were, if you had just, did we bring up to the board the copy of the student, the teacher, so you have one copy of a teacher guide, as well as one copy of a student workbook. We have others at the back. So, thank you very much. I do want to commend Colleen Stam, our K-12 math and science coordinator, along with Dr. Carrie Heaney, who is our PhD, I'm excited to supervise a PhD in mathematics, who is our math coach. And so, they have worked long, hard since last spring to engage in this extensive previewing process and coming to a place of recommendation to the Board of Education. Over the last few years, you have been on a journey with us in looking at data in terms of where our students' achievement is and where their growth is. And we know that K-12, we've seen certain literacy ups and downs and maintainings, and mathematics ups and downs and maintainings. And over the last few years, we've been doing work in the area of mathematics at the elementary and secondary. Through that work, continuing to look at the data, seeing urgency in that data, we have done, had opportunities to visit our classrooms and see what kids are doing in the classrooms, as part of some of the professional development we've offered. What we're noticing is in the, there's a, there's a instructional equity that we need to look at, when we see some classrooms focusing heavily on procedural understandings of mathematics. When I say procedural, I'm thinking algorithms, steps of solving a problem, numbers, operations, procedural, step by step. What students are missing is the conceptual understanding, which is how the math works, which is behind those procedures. So, in observations of classrooms, we're noticing there are classrooms that are heavily focused on procedure and not the concepts connected to those procedures, which, as students move higher and higher in the grade levels and get to more rigorous and complex mathematics, is their mathematics performance starts to fall apart. And you see that very commonly when we go from K-2 to 3-5, the shift in content from 3-5 to 6-8, and then into the high school level. So, in classroom observations, observing what teachers are doing, we're seeing a disconnect in student understanding of procedural and conceptual. And we know that all of our state assessments focus on both of those. The other piece we're noticing, and teachers are reporting to us, is mathematical language is pretty complex. It's a world language in and of itself, and it can often become a barrier for students as they, excuse me, as they progress in their math learning, because there's a disconnect between the word plain and what it actually means, and then how to apply the concept, or linear, or linear equation. There's a lot of vocabulary that students have to connect to concepts and procedures, and we're finding that students are struggling with that vocabulary and making meaning of that. In addition, as we watch classrooms, we have very gifted teachers that are working within the resources that they have been provided. And we're noticing that there's some variability in teacher practice in light of what their prior professional development learning was, or their content knowledge, or the resources they've had. And so, we feel that we need a resource that will, one, excuse me, allow us to build conceptual and procedure, a resource that will also help kids build language of mathematics, and a resource that'll support our teachers in the instructional shifts, thank you, and a resource that will also provide students equitable access to the learning. So, we found a lot of urgency in student empathy data, teacher empathy data, and our state assessment data, and walking our classrooms. So, when we started to look at a resource, we started with one initial premise, and that was a problem-focused mathematics program, which can often be called as a task-based program. That means we start student learning by putting them in an exploratory phase, a meaning-making phase, where they watch for patterns, they look for concepts and how numbers and things work. They work collaboratively. And then, what you do is you take those experiences in those small group collaborative opportunities, and the teacher works by coaching individual groups and the whole class during synthesis and consolidation opportunities, full class, to name what the kids just saw. We're not putting students into tasks, having them explore, and then move on to now go solve problems. We're putting them in an opportunity to look at some mathematical problems, make some discoveries, share their thinking, synthesize that thinking, name the mathematics, and then help them connect the concepts to the procedures, so they can do those practice problems. So, research says if you put meaning-making before acquisition, you have deeper learning and you have longer retention. So, we wanted a resource that started with meaning-making, followed by acquisition, followed by some more acquisition, followed by some more meaning-making, followed by some more acquisition. And when you sequence all those meaning-making acquisitions together, you get deeper mathematical learning. So, we screened for that first. And then, we looked at a number of other elements for each of the programs we looked at. Illustrative mathematics meets that first requirement, that screening requirement I just mentioned. Excuse me. I feel like I'm tripping over my own vocal cords. There's a couple of other things that we were, were very compelling about illustrative mathematics, which we have not had before, which are pre-assess- which we have not had before, which are pre-assessments for each unit that allows the teacher to know and students to know where they are in their learning prior to the start of the unit. That pre-assessment actually helps teachers understand if there's prior gaps that students might have and actually provides suggestions on either in small group or full class, how to fill those gaps. And then daily, there are formative assessments for the teachers and the students to know where they are in their learning. And this is one of the first instructional resources we've seen that values small group, full class and independent practice while also providing an opportunity for teachers to pull kids in small groups. That is not common in a secondary program to help accelerate learners. So we were very excited by the type of assessments and the data it gave students and teachers in addition to having that meaning-making and acquisition. Sometimes you can get into these resources and these meaning-making tasks are really long and elaborate and there's not enough time for kids to have their meaning consolidated before misconceptions brew or misconceptions brew for too long. What we found in illustrative mathematics is the lessons in a given lesson and across lessons, there's so much chunking, the teacher is always present helping consolidate their learning, naming the math to move kids to procedure and algorithms. We need students to move to procedures and algorithms, but not without conceptual understanding. So some of the research, resources I gave you, gave you more information about additional differences between what we're doing now, what this resource provides and how this resource stood against some of the other resources we looked at. That assessment was one of them and the chunking was another piece that stood out. The other thing that we liked was every day, there's daily practice connected to the work of the day, 10 to 15 problems. In addition, there's additional problems in the online platform. We can assign students problems and give them immediate feedback in the system. The teacher doesn't have to score, the system scores it, so they get immediate feedback. We know from best research, the quicker the feedback, the better the movement in learning and progress in learning. The other thing we always hear from teachers is there's never enough practice. I'm sure Claudia, you can contest to that, that math teachers love practice. They like practice because they want to provide students opportunities to get some more rigorous problems than where they might have in the resource, more problems that might speak to lower some concepts that we're having to intervene in or additional grade level problems. It's very common, I see with every resource adoption I've ever seen in mathematics. Actually, sometimes we have to pull away those practice problems from teachers because they'll move into that traditional rote, procedure, replicate, rote, procedure, replicate. So what we were lucky is that this year, we've been already previewing a tool called Magna Math that has additional practice in it. Actually, by coincidence, has illustrative mathematic problems in it. So we are integrating that alongside the resource. We were always going to use that alongside any resource we adopted. Integrating more practice based on the needs of who's in front of you is always something that teachers have at their fingertips. What they don't have is meaning-making tasks followed by quality acquisition. Kids need to transfer their knowledge on these state assessments we're taking and they're stuck at the procedural and they're not moving into a place of transfer. So all of this work is aligned to acquisition, meaning, acquisition, meaning-making and transfer founded by Grant Wiggins, who's the leader in learning and positioning authenticity and noticing, which is based in significant research. In the, so I will pause there because I know I got on a little bit of my excitement zone and didn't give Colleen any time and everyone could be upset with me that I'm keeping you here later.
I can tell that you're excited.
But it's exciting. We really need a restart and a reboot for our middle school and high schools and to have all of them on the same resource for the dollar value we're investing, it's about $40 a kid every year.
Are there any questions, Mrs. Smith?
You just took me to an all-you-can-eat buffet and expected me to eat this in like 20 minutes.
Yes, I did. But you also had it in writing ahead of time.
So I'm going to say, with all seriousness.
Yes.
A few years ago, because I've been on the board nine years, we've had this same conversation over and over and over again, that this is the best thing coming. I think that what we do need to do, after hearing your presentation, we need to go back to have a curriculum committee with the board. We had that under Dr. Turner, we had it under President Williams, and I know I'm going to have somebody tell me, well, stay out the weeds. Well, I use Miracle Grow. At the end of the day, this is about our kids. We have heard this time and time and time again, that this is going to be the best thing smoking. And we have heard each time that people have come to this podium, this is going to help our children. I love your presentation, but at the end of the day, it's nothing against our teachers. But if you get a parent like me, 62 years old, and I have a kid come home and tell me, I don't know what I'm doing. I was told you could YouTube it or you can do a video. So what if that parent still can't get it? I got a box right now in my living room that I'm supposed to YouTube to put something together. That's why it's been sitting there two weeks. But at the end of the day, group work does not work. I have three daughters and they have done group work with groups and there's always been somebody in the group that either didn't get it or lack of knowledge or just flat-out lazy. And that student got the same credit as those that worked hard. So I'm not against it, but it, you haven't sold me on it. I'm not against what the teachers are doing, but I need more knowledge other than you bring me those books and have me go through them and glance through them. Now, if you brought me a book on how to dissect an eye or a frog or find the carotid artery, I can do that with my eyes closed. But this here, I don't get it. And if I can't get it, how many other parents are not going to be able to get it? So I would like to take a step back and see more and then I could come back with an answer. But right now, I mean, because everything that we have tried, we have failed. And we have helped fail these students. And so at the end of the day, I want something that's going to help. I know that we're moving the needle, but I want to see something that actually moves the needle. And I need more education on this. That's just me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mrs. Heinrich?
You know, Mrs. Smith, I really appreciate your comments and your perspective on that because I'm sitting here from a different perspective and I'm just, I'm thinking, you know, armchair coaches, all of our professional teams would do better if they just asked the people watching on their TV how to coach the teams. So as a board member collectively, we're not really expected to be curriculum experts and that's why we hire the superintendent who hires the curriculum. But I will, I do want to share my experience because I have a 40-year career in teaching mathematics and I not only taught high school, but I taught college-level mathematics and so I know what students need or are lacking when they get to college because I taught at the community college level. But I was fortunate to work for a big school district and I was on numerous textbook adoption committees. And so I've looked at a lot of textbooks. I was on curriculum alignment committees when we aligned our curriculum to the high school content expectations. And then when the Common Core came out, I was on the committee where we aligned our curriculum to the Common Core standards. And one thing that I noticed whenever we would do a textbook adoption is textbooks really haven't changed over the years. When the standards change or the flavor of the month comes out, they might add an investigation at the beginning or applications at the end, but the basic content is always the same historically if you look at textbooks. And so after the last presentation, I had some concerns and so I asked Dr. Coffin, could I come over and look at the books in more detail and sit down and perhaps talk to Margaret? And I talked to Margaret and Colleen and really based on my experience as a teacher and the things that we're asked to do because, you know, the Michigan Council or the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics is research-based. It has effective mathematic teaching practices. And looking at the resources and the things that we're doing in our district, some of the things is when you talk about group explorations, I mean, I, as a teacher, I've had those experiences where I take the activity that's added in the beginning and go to my class and, you know, it's a disaster, it's a trademark sort of thing. So, and looking at these resources, these aren't, these aren't group explorations where the kids are supposed to learn what they're supposed to learn and then the teacher has to explain it to them. They're really smaller chunked-in investigations and the Common Core curriculum and the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics effective practices is for teachers to really make or for students to make sense and have understanding of what they're doing. And this is a confession, you know, as a teacher, I would experiment with my classes sometimes, you know, I would give them because they wanted, they wanted the recipe to follow. And so I would give them the recipe to follow, which I didn't really believe was good instruction. But then I would, they didn't do real well with that, you know? Knowing as a teacher how to get kids to understand, how to experience, how to work in groups, back when Jennifer Granholm was governor, she had Algebra for All. And I mean, I remember going to Algebra for All and saying, I like my students sitting in their assigned seats, doing their assigned work. And I went out of my comfort zone and actually learned how to make groups work and group projects and things like that. So one of the things that I observed in talking to Colleen and talking to Margaret and looking at the resources, that we're not just purchasing the flavor of the month that's going to rescue mathematics with something added at the beginning, something added at the end, but it's the same old, same old. But it's actually, they're actually good resources combined with the professional development piece with the teacher professional development, the collaboration, the teacher coaching, the teachers learning how to use the resources, how to engage the students. And some of my questions that I had after that I kind of want to ask you to share was, I had a question about the opportunities for acceleration and remediation. And you kind of addressed that, but just so that, because that's a really big thing. And so maybe you can just share with our community how the kids that need the extra help, that they don't get it and they go home. Because, believe me, I sit down with my grandkids and I help them do their math homework and I'm thinking, what about the parents that don't know how to do this? How are they helping their kids? Sort of thing. So maybe to address that. And I'm always concerned about the kids that are getting it, you know, they're just not going on to the next level. So how is this resource going to help in that along with how are you supporting the teachers in learning how to do that in their classrooms?
I appreciate both comments. The, the meaning-making in Farmington Public Schools is at one of the heart of our learning framework, acquisition, meaning-making and transfer. So everything we look at will be looking at how is that designed for literacy, math, science or social studies. And I do appreciate the statement about, this isn't like a, maybe exploration is the wrong word, but it's strategic use of small group around, small groups around really specific problems for kids to discover, see, collaborate, make meaning together, which is a social endeavor that we want our college students to do and we want our college and career-ready students to do as part of the profile of a lifelong learner. So we have to think about how do we strongly support small group work, collaborative work, K-12. One of the key pieces I will always say is that there is no silver bullet to any program or any resource. There is not. But I will tell you, we've been living in the same resources for a number of years, supporting with professional development and supplementals, and we're not seeing the movement. So to reset our resources, that it's backed by resource, but backed by research, the national science teaching of teachers of mathematic and some of the other research I shared with you, we're looking for something that's credible in the resource, just like we did for literacy in the lower grade levels, and we will always look for that. What our teachers haven't had with CPM or big ideas are the assessment pieces that are built into illustrative mathematics, which is very intriguing for our teachers. It's a lot of work to identify where students are and how to support them. So the pre-assessment for every unit gives the teacher understanding of where the students are sitting with that unit before starting. And if you see at the back, there is like a guide where it says if students are struggling with this on the assessment, here's a suggestion. If students are excelling in this area, here's a suggestion. So it gives some suggestions for unit pacing, like what lessons to add or maybe subtract for the full group, what everyone experiences, but also provides options for teachers to do in small group, whether that's giving them to a deeper level of that concept, the same concept, same grade level concept or prior grade level concept. And the other piece is when you have formative assessment every day, some kind of exit opportunity where kids have to show their learning for that day, gives the kids and a teacher understanding of where they are. And then the teachers have that information to adjust the instruction for the students. And this will be a shift for students and teachers, but what we've seen in classrooms already are the early indicators of what we want to see in classrooms with this resource.
Do you have?
Yes. So I'm a big adopter of something that's, you know, that's new and that's innovative. However, I want to make sure that the people who, the professors or whoever, the experts are not just writing information just to impress colleagues. And so what I, what I'm very interested in, that what was the results on the focus groups of, you know, with the kids, you know, what was the, what was the matrix that you guys followed and if they met the, because every kid learns different, right? So, and I do recognize that. However, is this have a results that we're looking for or is this another, you know, another, like they say, flavor of the month type of thing that gets you the same results? But, you know, we're trying to move the, you know?
Tom, and I can adjust that a little bit. We did look in at what other districts have adopted this resource and Troy schools have adopted this. I had a conversation directly with the superintendent there and they've made some structural changes with the adoption of this resource and they are seeing significant improvements. He's very happy with what he's seeing, very similar to what we have. You have resources there, you're relying on individuals to be able to make this work and he has found that this resource really was what moved, started to move the needle for them at Troy.
Dr. Turner?
Thank you. I'm a bit more pragmatic when I consider things and so I know this investment is, I have a million dollars. And I know you said we're not seeing the gains or the outcomes that we want to see on the current system now. So when, with the support and efforts that are in place, when will we assess this investment in these educational instructional resources to determine if our investment bears out?
So similar to our EL Skills Block and our WIT and Wisdom implementations, we have ongoing progress monitoring where we are doing classroom observations, teacher surveys, we're looking at the different data points around literacy, including NWA and M-Step. Similarly, for mathematics at middle school and high school, we will be taking a look at and following our NWA scores on mathematics. We'll be following our M-Step, SAT, PSAT in mathematics. We will also be doing classroom walkthroughs. We will continue to do surveys with teachers to have an understanding, gauge their confidence and their reaction and their perceptions. We will continue to do focus groups with students and get surveys of students, similar to what we're doing in our K-5 program each year. We don't start to program eval in the fifth year of the use of a resource. You start doing it year one for a couple of reasons. One, you learn a lot about a resource once it's in practice with teachers and students. So you understand what supports do students and teachers need with that resource to deepen its impact. In general, if you look at the research, you'll see three to five years to get full implementation of a resource at its peak. But year one, similar to what we're seeing in literacy right now, we're seeing some early gains. So we make sure we use multiple data points to see early gains, what's early indicators and then if we're not seeing them, let's look further and look deeper. And so Colleen Stam, Carrie Heaney will be leading that work of progress monitoring and similar to what we've been doing with K-5 literacy, will provide updates to the Board of Education. And similar to what we've been doing with K-5 literacy, we'll provide updates to the Board of Education.
Yes.
There is an example from one of these resources that you shared with us last time. I can't find it, it might not be even in one of these two that we're looking at today, that I wanted to share. And I apologize for my very poor drawing, but there was an illustration in one of the, one of the new resources that showed lines going this way, lines going this way, and lines going on an angle. And one of the group activities, it's not a group project in the way that we, you know, might have experienced. It's more of just a short, um, small group interaction. And so, for example, the students would be given this image and be asked, what do you notice? And some students might notice that, oh, the lines that go this way are parallel. Some of the students might notice the lines that go up and down are parallel. Some of the students might notice that the horizontal lines are parallel. Some of the students might notice that, oh, it, the, all the intersecting lines form triangles. Somebody else might notice that they're equilateral triangles or that the angles seem to be equal in, in, uh, in size. So it's a short curiosity builder, a short, um, to kind of whet the appetite of the students and get them wondering, to kind of engage them in the thinking about this as the starter. Make them hungry for the meal and then serve them the meal. So, uh, and what I have found is that when I try and do something like this with my whole class, I get the same four students who always raise their hand and participate. When I have the students work together, U3, 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 then many more of the students engage in the looking and the noticing and the conversation because there, I'm walking around and there are only three kids at each table. And so more students engage in that. And that's the kind of group, uh, group work that this set of resources is so rich with. It's these smaller, you know, in-the-moment, in-the-classroom group collaboration pieces, not so much the, you know, big projects where, yeah, you have somebody who does all the work and somebody has, you know, none of the work. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I'm reading a book right now by a cognitive neuroscientist whose name is Daniel Willingham. And, uh, all, actually, the title of the book is Why Don't Kids Like School? And he talks all about the, the science of learning and how making our children curious first is a very important piece of the puzzle to helping them engage in a meaningful way in their own learning. And research shows that their learning is much deeper and more permanent if they come to it from a state of wonder and curiosity as their entryway into the new material, the new content and the new skills. So this fits with what I'm reading currently by a cognitive neuroscience about how the brain learns best and what conditions to create in our classrooms to help students really engage in a meaningful and deep and permanent way with their own learning.
Just want to comment back, to use your analogy of meal, this meal costs a meal.
Mm-hmm.
So I want to make sure that it fortifies the individuals that it's intended for. And if not, in three to four years, when we assess this and we come back, did we spend and were we good stewards with the resources that we were obligated to have charge over? We're not Troy, similar in some regards, but we're different. And we see gains early and we'll see gains hopefully later. But if we don't, we still have a charge for the teaching and learning for the students in this district. In three to four years, that's a high school cycle. So that's four years that students will endure this. And if it's not fruitful, it doesn't bear out, then it's like junk food, right? And I don't want to purchase junk food if you have an opportunity for a substantial meal, to use your analogy. And that's my concern. And, and all of the researches went in, all of the feedback that we received, obviously, we've got experts on the table, we've got doctors here that have an understanding of pedagogy and learning and teaching. But we've got to consider our population and hopefully the outcomes are what we want because the meal costs a meal and we have that responsibility.
From, from what, from my review of the materials and from what I know in my experiences, 39 years in a classroom, working with, with kids, uh, this is worth the price.
We find out.
Uh, just, just one pointed question. What results did, did the district see and find in the classrooms that piloted this?
So, um, just as we did with EL Skills Block and, and Witten Wisdom, because we use a very similar process across all of our adoptions that are this significant and this potential impact. There were, um, the teachers used the resources from September to December. Teachers, September through February, got through one or two units of study, to three to four units of study. So we saw teachers and students engage in three to four units of study, which means the teachers got to analyze how the content was built from lesson to lesson and unit to unit, which is a big important point when looking at a quality math resource, is how are the standards sequenced, scoped and sequenced? So that was one analysis that they did. They also pulled out individual tasks connected to specific high priority standards and compared the tasks across multiple of the programs that we were previewing and seeing how each resource used that. They also analyzed the assessment types and compared and contrasted the type of assessment task, whether those were daily formative or larger summative assessments, to make sure the task types were aligned to what we want, to our curriculum and what we want students to know and be able to do. So we did analysis, that's one part of the data collection, is taking analysis of the resource. And the other piece was we did classroom observations to see the teacher practice with the resource and to see the student response to the resource. So we did multiple classroom observations, one of which Oakland Schools, as part of their initiatives at Oakland Schools, came out and has been working with us on our mathematics work. And they saw these classrooms in action. I have personally seen a Warner, Warner Middle School, sixth grade classroom. That was amazing. And around area, perimeter, or some combination, surface area and volume. And so what we're looking, and what the teachers reported is when they watch students talk, listen to students talk, watch what they produce, they are hearing conversations with mathematical language and mathematical reasoning that they weren't seeing in their current resources and that the resources supported students. So what you were talking about, Claudia, is, is every kid be able to access that task? And so these, these particular tasks allow more than one kid to start to enter the conversation, even if they don't have all the mathematical background. They don't have the strong math identity or they don't know all the procedures. So it provides access. So those are the types of things that we look at. There was no common assessment tool, I'll be visible about that, because each, each resource does the content in a different order and there was no common tool from assessment. But we did look at how students performed on the ABA assessments in the, in the resources to see if they gained the understanding that was intended on the assessment.
Mrs. Heinrich and then Mrs. Smith.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I think this is important that we, we take the time to discuss it. So we're talking about adopting the six through 12. And so maybe you can share a little bit about, you know, the kids are jumping at different grade levels. You know, it's one thing, um, you know, middle school mathematics is six, seven, and eight. Or and then, but then you have high school, you have Algebra I, Geometry Algebra II. I mean, some students will be starting in at the Algebra II level, some at the Algebra I level. Some will be jumping in at the Geometry level. So as far as transitioning, um, what are your plans for that? Or how are you going to make that type of transition? And then I think I had another question too, but let me just.
Because our current resources and the new resources are both aligned to the Common Core standards, the Michigan standards. The standards just provide us what we want students to know and be able to do. We determine the instructional approaches to get students there. Common Core does not define the instructional approaches. So the content, fundamental content at each grade level is the same or course. What we're doing is shifting about how that content is treated and how we, we instruct. We always expect there'll be some transitions. So generally what happens is the first or second unit tends to take a little bit longer than they would in a normal year to get teachers and students used to the routines, some of the new behaviors to collaborate, to share their thinking, those types of pieces. But remember, those are also things we've been working on over the last three years with all staff on discourse participation structures, our Profile of a Lifelong Learner. So it's not going to be like all of a sudden, everything's completely flipped. There will be some bridging from the past to this future.
The first two units in every course has community building built into all of the lessons to teach our kids how to talk, how to learn from each other. It's all built in within the lessons. And we have found our Algebra II students who are using this right now are talking way more than they were talking before. And they started this year with this resource. They didn't have anything similar in Algebra I, Algebra and Geometry, and they are successful. So we are seeing results, just jumping right in.
Okay, and then you had some, I think last year we had a presentation. You had some teachers that were doing the vertical classroom.
Yeah.
Where it was discussion-based and, and it's, I think it's expanded throughout the districts since then.
Yep.
And so just, um, it seems like this resource is going to really support those teachers and make the work they're doing easier. I mean, can you just address how it's going to align with that particular project?
So as shared in some of my prior communication, um, one, we've been aligning to the National, NCTM, National Council for Teaching of Mathematics and the research embedded there. We've also been, over the last few years, working with Building Thinking Classrooms. And that is also supported by Oakland Schools now. We were starting it, they followed suit, I'm going to take that credit. And it's also aligned with our math recovery work on how do we support rich, deep number sense, all the math recovery investment. So the Building Thinking Classrooms work we've been doing over the last three years in K-8, the Building Thinking Classroom work we're doing, all the types of professional development we're doing is all in line with this resource. It's not like a brand-new thing, it's what we've been driving towards. But we need a shift in resource in order to continue to drive the work forward.
And several of our preview teachers are Building Thinking Classroom teachers, so they were using it in conjunction with that. So it does support Building Thinking Classroom.
So it actually makes their job easier because they don't have to go out and look for supplements. But just, can you, just our community members that are concerned about the direct instruction, this isn't going to replace teaching kids how to do long multiplication or replace teaching kids how to solve equations. I mean, they're still going to get instruction in mathematical practices. It's just an opportunity to build understanding and approach it from different levels and different, different angles and different, different perspectives.
Still factor quadratic equations, which I still don't know how to do. But my daughter's doing it now.
I love those.
Mrs. Smith?
I respect and appreciate my colleagues that are former teachers, I mean, two former teachers up here and CPA and Mr. Hall and Dr. Turner. Thank you for the clarification, that this is not a speech class in teaching kids how to speak. This is a math class. My concern is if these kids, I've had parents call me. I don't take phone calls the day before a school board meeting. Parents are concerned. They don't want their children to be the guinea pig. They don't want their kid to be not able to know how to do math. They want them to know how to do math and get them ready for whatever field they want to go into. I appreciate Ms. Heinrich breaking it down, but she's a math teacher. But some of our parents are not math teachers. I appreciate, you know, she's a former math teacher. Dr. Blau, former teacher with the school in her home. I appreciate that. But we're talking about the general population and a parent. And that's my concern. I'm concerned about those parents that don't have the skills that either of these women have, or even myself. So I'm not going to take up too much time, you know, with this, because I know we have to move on. But I appreciate everything, I just still need some more clarity.
There are parent-specific resources that come along with each unit that we did share with the Board of Education to help that, meet that need that all parents tend to have regardless of the instructional resource in front of their students.
One thing, thank you, thank you, Margaret. One thing I do want to share is, well, I want to share a couple of things. One of the things that we've been working on over the last five years is to bring quality resources to our teacher, and that's what we are doing. So please know, this has been vetted and this has been with our teachers. And our teachers are the ones who are right at the center of making these selections. I am a math teacher, so I do have a different perspective. When I came here five years ago, I knew that our middle school resource, and Colleen knows this, I couldn't believe we were still using it because of what I taught back in the 90s. And it wasn't, it didn't feel like it was working then. And, and when I saw this here, we had evidence that it wasn't working there. So we know for sure that our 6'8" needed to change. And for me, it, I wanted it sooner, but it was part of this, this bigger conversation. The other thing that I think we have to remember is when we talk about some of these, uh, these classrooms and these thinkings, we used to call them story problems. And so the story problems are no longer done in isolation, they are done collaboratively. I had the opportunity to go and listen to middle school students talk about how they solved, I'll say, these story problems with multi-steps. And they had to think about a lot of different mathematical calculations within answering one question. So they went through, they had done it, they had to present their evidence and share how they got the answer. And I said to them, what is it about your classroom that allowed this to happen? To a student, they said, the whiteboards, the whiteboards, the whiteboards. Because they were able to put their thinking up there. Now, they can do that with any program. But I think as we think about some of these different techniques that they're talking about, the, the students are saying, this is how I understand math better. Again, as a former math teacher, teaching one of the resources we had, I can look at 30 kids, because that's what I had in my classroom, and no, there was no way that I was going to be able to get to them all. We are now in 2025. We have technology that can support this. We have teachers who need a resource like this because that helps them see and think about learning differently. We saw this when we adopted Witten Wisdom. Not everybody, that was not something everybody was ready to do. It was a little bit of a stretch. Our teachers recognized in themselves that there were some areas of growth for them in their instruction. And that is what we saw in this pilot, that there were teachers that realized they had gaps in their own ability to instruct. So again, I just wanted to say that all, to say that we have been struggling with our math resources at least for five years. So we can continue, you know, or, you know, what is it, what is additional information? We need to, need to make the best decision. But I think having teachers pilot something from September to February and work through that is probably one of the longest pilots I've ever seen. With Wisdom, we just did one unit, one, you know, one and a half, two months. So I just wanted to put that out there for the board to consider as you, as you make your determinations.
As a point of order, is there a motion on the floor already?
There is not a motion.
Oh, okay.
We're going to entertain in a minute. So I, I want to say, I really appreciate the rich discussion. This is very important. I mean, this is how our kids are going to learn, so I'm really happy that we're having the conversation. I want to say thank you to the district staff who pulled this information together for us, who answered lots of questions over the past couple of weeks. In my own review of the math materials, I had similar questions to all of my board members and similar observations, actually, to everyone. So I appreciate everybody's thoughts on this. I had some concerns, some thoughts, some questions. I got them all answered. And when I looked at the books, I'm not a math teacher, but I'm a math lover. I really appreciated the, um, the, the thinking that's required. And I haven't seen that before in a math textbook. There were a lot of questions that said, find the value mentally. I'm like, what? What kind of question is that? Find, find, but, but when I dug deeper and noticed some of the examples, I thought that was a little rudimentary and I was a little concerned when you pulled up the piece of paper. But I appreciated what you were saying. There are lots of examples like that where they're asking the students to think, how many boxes of tissue does it take to get to five feet? Kinds of questions that make them sort of ponder and think about the question as opposed to the traditional approaches, which, here's your formula, here's your math, do the work. And, and I think that having the opportunity to have some of our kids understand the question like at a high level and think about conceptually, should my answer be, you know, five, or should my answer be a thousand? Helps them frankly, on a standardized test. my answer be a thousand, helps them, frankly, on a standardized test weed out some of the responses. And that's what I'm actually looking for, is some thinking as opposed to just rote memorization. And so that's what I saw as I looked in it a little bit deeper. So I think we're in a position now to either entertain or motion or not, and so I will leave it to the board to decide whether they want to make a motion to suggest that we consider approval of this. Mrs. Heinrich?
I move that the Board of Education approve the adoption of the recommended secondary mathematics instructional resources as presented. The instructional materials will be purchased from Imagine Learning at a total cost of
Second. There's been a motion on the table to approve the adoption of the recommended secondary mathematics instructional resources in the amount of $975,618. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please. Dr. Turner?
Trusty Hall?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
No.
Trusty Heinrich?
Yes.
Trusty Blau?
Yes.
I myself. Yes. President Williams?
Yes. Thank you, that motion passes. Again, I appreciate all of the thoughtful dialogue, this was a really good discussion and a very important conversation. We will now move to the next item, which is, sorry. Marching band purchase. Is there a motion? This matter was identified or presented to us at the last meeting. Mrs. Heinrich?
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of new rain jackets for the marching bands at Farmington High School and North Farmington High School as presented. Jackets will be purchased from Francis Enterprises at a total cost of $40,173 for both schools, excluding shipping and handling.
Support.
There's a motion to approve the purchase of new rain jackets in the amount of $40,173 for both schools, supported by Dr. Turner. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Do we get, ever get an estimate on the?
Shipping and handling?
Yep.
I remember you had that question, I don't recall if we got an answer to that.
Okay.
Is there someone who can answer that?
Nope.
I don't think they have an answer to that. She's getting it right now.
I think they're talking about the math books and we're talking about the uniforms.
Yeah.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
No. The motion reads that it excludes shipping and handling, does that mean the shipping handling? The purchase from Francis Enterprises at a total cost of $40,173 for both schools, excluding shipping and handling, as if those shipping and handling will follow.
Got it. They are in Michigan, though.
I know.
So do we know whether they're delivering the jackets?
They are delivering to us, yes, I can get that information. I did not, I'm not getting it.
Uh, do you want to, this, this doesn't come to us until, this is for the fall, correct?
The intention was to purchase and have it given to the schools this year because we do have summer training, et cetera, this year.
What's the impact of delaying this until we can find the answer to that question? None?
If they can get it to us by the end of the calendar year for this year budget, that's the only thing.
Then I think we should get that question answered. Okay.
It's been probably moved to a second, so.
So do you, can you withdraw your motion?
Can I, can I move to table the motion further?
Yeah, we'll withdraw the motion and we'll put it back on the agenda once we get the answer to the question.
Okay, so would I need to move to withdraw the motion rather than table it?
Yes.
Okay, so I move to withdraw the motion as presented.
I withdraw my second.
Okay, thank you. So the motion has been withdrawn, we will add that to a future action item once we get those questions answered. Thank you for that, Dr. Turner. We'll now move to the approval of the recommended policy updates. We have, I believe, three of them. Dr. Turner?
Thank you. I move that the Board of Education adopt the policy slash Board Governors Committee recommendations as noted in the comments section of the Miller Johnson's Policy Manual Update Memo dated March 5th, 2025, as presented for the following policies, only three policies. Policy update 19.04, which is Policy 6,003 Firearms and Weapons. Second is Policy Update 19.05, which is Policy 6,004 School Crisis Response and Closure. And the last is the update to 19.06, which is Policy 8,002 Americans with Disability Act in Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act, Section 504.
Motion has been made to approve the policies as outlined in our packet, supported by Mrs. Smith. Any discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote? Dr. Turner?
Thank you. Trusty Heinrich?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Hall?
Yes.
Trusty Blau?
Yes.
I myself, yes. Trusty Williams?
Yes. Thank you, that motion passes. We'll now move to items from the treasurer.
Okay, I move that the Board of Education approve the expenditures as outlined in the expenditure printout dated April 22nd, 2025 as follows. General Fund, uh, let's see, looks like $24,398,654. General Fund Athletics, $264,710. Debt Fund, $144,193. Capital Projects 2020 Bond Fund, $1,731,231. Nutrition Services Fund, $816,534. Benefit Stabilization Fund, $2,603,575, for a total of $29,958,897.
Support.
Motion made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Dr. Turner, to approve the expenditure report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes. Next, is there a motion for the consent agenda? Ms. Heinrich?
I move to present, to approve the consent agenda. A, approval of minutes, number one, April 8th, 2025, regular meeting. Number two, April 17th, 2025, Finance Facilities Committee meeting. B, Head Start Director's monthly reports, C Personnel Items.
Support. Motion made by Mrs. Heinrich, supported by Mrs. Smith, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes. Are there any reports from board representatives? Mrs., Dr. Blau?
I'm not the Student Roundtable representative, but I am going to be having a table at their career fair this Friday. From nine to 11 is the first shift and one to three is the second shift at North Farmington. So if you're able to stop by and bear witness to the wonderful career fair that the Student Roundtable has organized this year, I'm sure they would really appreciate the support.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Smith?
I was able, I was a little late, well, I was late. April 17th, the FAPN organization had our SROs come here to this building to discuss and talk about what we, what the SROs do in the community, in, in our schools. I think that the Farmington Hills Police Department and Farmington both do a phenomenal job. Not only do they have a relationship with the students, but they are very, very well received and loved by not only the staff, but through the community. They work very well with our students. They have done some things, they're very active, they're at all our football games, basketball games, everything that you can name. We even have a police officer in the back of this building that comes and spends her time here with us to make sure that we are safe. So I appreciate the Farmington Hills Police Department and the Farmington Police Department in coming out, taking time off of the road, because not only do they work in our schools, but they work, they are still police officers. So I want to thank them for all the work that they have done. But I also want to say, on another note, President Williams has done a phenomenal job over the past few years with her monetary donation from the Williams family. They give a scholarship every year, which is totaled, over the past few years, up to Ms. Heinrich also has donated for a scholarship in the past. And I want to thank Ms. Williams, not only does she donate this, for this scholarship, she also feeds 100 families over Thanksgiving. And if those families don't have ways of cooking that food, her family actually cooks and makes everything and delivers. I also have donated in the past, I don't like people knowing what I do because I want you calling me, asking me to give anything that I shouldn't be, because I don't know how to say no. But under the leadership of Dr. Turner and Ms. Williams, over the years before COVID, we would donate to 21 families at one school for two and a half months. We also, Ms. Fox and myself, Ms. Williams and Dr. Turner, we've also donated to Farmington Central for cap and gowns. We have also taken care of the Golden Apple, which I will be talking to Dr. Moore to do that in the near future. But I want people to know, we only make $30 a meeting. $30. Other school districts, they make, some have $200, some have 150, but we take out of our own pockets. And I want to thank Ms. Williams for all the work that she has done with doing this donation and, and giving to this scholarship, because so many students are not fortunate to go to college without having the financial help. She also has purchased a tent for North Farmington, for the track team. So, you know, we just don't sit here and not give back. We were elected to give back and to serve. And so I want to thank her, Dr. Turner, and Ms. Heinrich for their monetary or their donations, whether it was for the food drive or whatever it has been, at least these are the ones that I know that have donated. So not to slight anyone else, but I appreciate that scholarship and the money that you have raised to give back to FAPN or whichever student, and same with Ms. Heinrich, for jumping in and taking that responsibility to give a scholarship to a student. I thank you both.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Do you have some?
Yes, so on April 11th, I met with the Farmingtons Men's Network, we're still trying to fish out what the, you know, our, our name's going to be. But it was, it's basically a collaboration of Farmington men that are in the community that have either school-aged kids or was part, oh, I'm talking to you guys, okay? Either people who are, have like school, school-aged kids or who've been through the district or who's just a concerned community member. And we all sat down, it was, it was a good, good amount of us for our first meeting. And basically, you know, we talked about various subjects, about how can men be part more integral into the school system. As, as a father in the district, I know I, in some ways, I sometimes kind of fit in with the all moms group and everything, you kind of like the loner out there that just get told what to do and, you know, we just do it. And I would like to actually have a voice sometimes, so it was good, but, and a lot of fathers, you know, kind of like feel, hey, we can contribute more, or the wives say, hey, could we have the fathers kind of like feel like they're part of it, you know? So we got a, we got some good ideas, such as just being exposed more, the kids more exposed to more to college classes or, or college careers, government, getting more involved into how government affairs work. There were discussions about, you know, mentoring, you know, because sometimes you just have kids that just need that, the other parent to talk to, not saying that, you know, their parents are not doing a good job, but, you know, that's the reason why you have like uncles and neighbors that you can just like, hey, I gotta, you know, I got some thoughts and stuff that I don't really want to talk to my parents about, but you still going to give them that good advice as a parent, because you can actually give them the same advice to the parent, and they say, wow, you're the greatest, wisest person in the world and your, and your parents are just saying the same thing. So with that, you know, we're trying to establish some type of, you know, just a presence in the actual district and also the community, and, you know, we're, we're looking to do like, you know, probably like a picnic or something like that, of all the dads, you know, come out and hang out, so.
Thank you. Mrs. Heinrich?
Yeah, can we report on the anxious generation? They had their last meeting and I actually had to leave the meeting early, I, I wasn't there for the last half hour. But I mean, it was, it was facilitated through the IDEA committee and we read the book and met three times. And so the third one was really talking about what, what schools can do, what parents can do, what, it was schools, parents, and something else. And so did, did the group come up with any action items or any goals to do as a result of this?
There's a Google Doc that went out to the people who participated in the discussion.
I didn't get that.
Okay, I'll make sure you get it.
Okay.
And because there was talk toward the end of the, of the third book talk around, what can we do, what actions can we actually make happen in our district? And so we're forming a committee.
Okay.
To, to take ideas from the book and come together as parents and community members to see what, what we can make happen.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, helps if you turn it on, right?
Right.
Anyway, so, yes, so there are going to be some action steps that are going to grow forth from this discussion. It was really, really well organized and Mr. Smith did a phenomenal job structuring the discussion and the breakout groups. It was really, really terrific.
Very good to hear. I just want to take a moment to thank all of the board members. I know that your time is precious, I appreciate the time that you spend with us and the work that you do. I know that each of you is doing a lot of great work in the community that, you know, goes noticed or unnoticed, and I just wanted to take a minute to say I notice you and I appreciate you. One last comment before we leave. The PTSA at North Farmington hosted a dialogue on the future of high school, I think it was last night. Really, really well done, very good discussion. I know that Farmington High School piloted some things last year. Now we're piloting some things in the next school year for North Farmington, but it's all around exploring a more flexible kind of competency-based programming for our, our high schoolers and, you know, even considering some sort of capstone project for them or internship programs for them, and making sure that they're really ready and prepared to enter the next phase of their lives, either workforce or college or military or whatever that might be. I'm really excited about what I was hearing.
Was this at North?
This was at North Farmington. It was, it was great. So at some point, when this gets fleshed out a bit more, I think it would be really great for us to hear from the folks that are organizing this about, you know, the direction. that are organizing this about, you know, the direction that we're moving in, which is all consistent with the conversations that we've been having. So, exciting. If there is nothing further, I think that we're ready for adjournment. Thank you.